Good evening and welcome to the Town of Douglas Planning Board Meeting for Thursday, August 11th, 2022. Time is 7:01 PM. First item on the agenda, Citizens Forum Call for Public Comment. Is anyone here for that agenda item? Seeing none. We are going to move forward the additional business accessory apartment extension 14 Maryland Drive. So in your packet, you can find the request. Mr. Benoit, any issues with the extension?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do not have any issues with the extension until our requirement.
Okay. Is anyone here on behalf of this application? Seeing no one. Board, do we review the application?
This is standard of the whole.
Yes.
I entertain a motion to grant the extension of the accessory apartment special permit for 14 Maryland Drive.
So moved.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker, second by Mr. Schultzberg. All those in favor? Go call, please.
Bernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike Schuker, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay. And then we have a bond estimate Woodland Road Extension.
Madam Chair.
Mm-hmm.
Bond estimate was received back in December. Board, the calls. We were reviewing a couple of lot releases for this at the same time. It was identified that there was still some work, corrective work, that needed to be done in the old cul-de-sac before that bond was released at that time. But this kind of fell off the wayside at that time because we focused on the lot releases and this came back to us now. I did reach out to our peer group consultant, Mr. Walsh, who cares engineering, to make sure that the pricing and the numbers were still valid, given this review is originally done in December.
Mm-hmm.
And he said that the numbers still stand today. My only recommendation, since this was 29,000 and change, I would just ask the board to consider just rounding up to an even 30K.
Okay. Where is the, is there the request in our pocket or?
I apologize. Madam Chair, that came in through email from Attorney Jack Neill. I did not share that to the board.
So they're requesting bond release in the amount of 30,000?
No, this is to establish a bond for the remaining work on the extension.
Okay. Establishing the bond and what's the current bond?
There is no current bond. This is to set the bond for the remaining work on the extension. We're approving the, the.
Okay. Because we previously released it?
Yeah, the value listed on the review is 29,014,800.
29,000?
29.
Well, this is my recommendation to move that to an even 30K.
Making it even 30 instead of the 29?
Hmm.
What's wrong with it?
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to set the bond amount to 30,000 for Woodland Road Extension.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Zwicker.
Second.
Second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
Bernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike Schuker, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay. Next item, 704, Public Hearing, 7:00 PM Public Hearing, JMT Sleepy Hollow LLC, Application for Earth Removal Permit, 22, 24, 26, and 28 Joseph Road, possible votes. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40A in the Town of Douglas Earth Removal Zoning Bylaw, Sections 6.1 and 9.3, the Planning Board will hold a public hearing on the application of owners, JMT Sleepy Hollow LLC, for an earth removal special permit for properties located on 22, 24, 26, and 28 Joseph Road, Douglas, Mass., Assessors Map 164, Parcels 9.9, 9.10, 9.11, and 9.12, lots 13 through 16, as shown on plan entitled Site Grading Plan of Land, dated July 14th, 2022, by Garry Aaron Howland, Inc., 333 West Street, Milford, Mass., 01757, consisting of 3.0 acres plus minus. Public hearing will be held on Thursday, August 11th, at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. A copy of the submittal is available for viewing in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this matter should appear at the time and place designated. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
Second.
Second by Mr. Zwicker. All those in favor?
Bernie Marks, aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike Schlesman, aye.
Mike Schuker, aye.
Jake Schultzberg, aye.
Okay. Who is here presenting on behalf of the applicant?
Amy Ryan with Pine Town. So in the package, we dropped off a letter. So we're asking that we are exempt from the Earth Removal Bylaw or for an application based on Section 6.1.3.1A. Do you want me to read that?
Sure.
This section specifically states that a special permit will not be required for excavation below finished grading that is directly customary and incidental to the construction of all buildings for which permits required for construction have been issued, including but not limited to excavation for foundations and septic systems. And we've attached the building permits for the lots 22, 24, 26, and 28. And we're also saying that previously before this board, that JMT Sleepy Hollow has received the approval for the 24 lot subdivision. And previously, we've had three earth removal permits that have been closed out, which have given ample time for anybody to address this issue.
And for the record, I know we have April 12th, 2022 from GNH. What was the actual date of that peer review? Was it, it was June?
June 21, 2022.
So for the record, June 21st, 2022 was the response from your, from the applicant's engineer?
Regarding the drainage.
So that was specifically addressing stormwater and grading and drainage analysis. And then we have our peer review from McCarty in response to that partial stormwater peer review dated July 6, 2022, just addressing the stormwater modeling. So McCarty recommended that the applicant incorporate a five-minute concentration through the stormwater monitor and show that infiltration basin is adequately sized. That's what came out of that.
Correct. And then the Garry Air engineer, Elizabeth Binini, is that letter in here? Explained that this is not required and to her point two, the modeling was done during the subdivision approval process.
Okay. Do we have that response? Okay. Just want to get a date on that. Same day, July 6? So you have applied for the Earth Removal Special Permit, but you are using the application and requesting an exemption?
That we're exempt from the, from applying for the Earth Removal Permit due to Section
Thank you. While Mr. Benoit gets that date and the response, I just want to hear what she's responded to. So Board, any questions or concerns regarding the application? So this was a follow-up from the previous discussion that we had and the vote that we had on the cease and desist.
I, I mean, the section spells it out, in my opinion. So, I mean, the original art removal was carried out the way it was supposed to be and now the building permits are pulled and I was stating facts.
Mr. Schultzberg, anything? This is a public hearing and if anyone has any questions or concerns, name, address, and address them through the chair, please.
I think I'll start.
Sure.
Jim Wood, 19 Monroe Street. We've been at this quite a while, since 2017. He's asking for an exemption from the earth removal specifically for lots 13 through 16, which are behind our houses on Monroe Street. Currently, there's earth removal going on. If that's not earth removal going on there, somebody needs to explain to me what earth removal, lay out what earth removal is. Now, I know the exemption says for digging cellar holes and foundations and, you know, all the general infrastructure that would go along with things related to putting a house up. I don't think, and I have some lawyer papers here from way back in the day, and the lawyer for the town back in the day didn't think, didn't feel that the approved building purpose meant to take that hill down so you could put a house at the bottom of it. It is now, and I've said this, it's a earth removal project hiding under a building permit. My concern is that this is going to continue to go on. It continues to go on to this day. They're removing earth out of there, Andy, if I'm wrong, tell me.
No, you're not wrong.
They're removing earth out of there.
Everything.
Aye, Paul.
Jeremy, please, thank you.
So if this is not an earth removal process, which in the town bylaw states, if they're applying for an earth removal permit, it has to be within 100 feet buffer of our property. Well, that's, that's totally, totally been negated and it's, I don't even know why you can have it in the bylaw or if you're not going to, you know, go forward and adhere to it. So my concern is, it seems like they get, they're just doing what they want back there.
Could you be more specific with your concern?
Well, my concern is there's a, there's a plan currently on the books that they're going to come down, and correct me if I'm wrong, but it's going to start down to, I apologize, it's going to come down 30 feet.
We can pull the plan up.
Well, I have the original plan that was voted on way back in the day.
We have to go by the plan that submitted with the application in front of us. It's dated 7/15/2022. Do you have that one?
That's probably the one I have here.
Okay.
But, so the current plan is going to be to take from my property line and straight down 30 feet and then out to a, some type of a plateau. Is that correct? Is that, you guys see that? You see it go from 452 to 450 to 4, is that the plan you're looking at?
I see bottom of the slope is 424.
424. Top of the slope is, thank you.
454.
So there's, so we're at 30 feet, correct?
20.
20, okay. My math is off.
Oh, no, sorry, 30.
That property line, the property line is, as I'm looking at this, it's calling for a six-foot fence and a tree line. Is that correct also?
Proposed six-foot chain link fence, yes.
Right. And then propose, is that PR, is that proposed PR tree line?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. So this was not in the original plan that was voted on. The original voted-on plan called for that plateau, that top of that hill to be flat and houses be put on top of that. I guess my question is, how did that change? How did that part of it change? I have papers here from Mr. Pine asking for special permission to put the plateau in. His explanation as to why he wanted it, blah, 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 yada, 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 and a little draw. He knew then that what is going on back there couldn't be done. And now it's just being done arbitrarily.
Okay.
I've been in contact with the town. Anybody that knows me, everybody gets an email. I don't leave anybody else. So I guess, I just need to know for no other reason than what is the current plan for that subdivision? Is it this plan?
It's dated 7/15/2022.
This is the original voted-on plan?
That was for subdivision. I have no idea what you have in your hand.
This is the original plan that was?
I don't know. But it's not in front of us, so I can't accept it.
I'll give it what you want it.
No, thank you.
Okay.
I don't want to get, I don't want to get into muddy water. So what are your specific concerns regarding?
This is the original voted-on plan.
Application. This is a brand-new application.
How is the application different from the voted-on plan? How can they do that?
You can apply for anything you want to apply for. Where, in front of us tonight is this application regarding 22, 24, 26, 28 Joseph Road.
But it was already voted on. I'm confused here how this is not working. This is the voted-on plan. That's what they were working on.
Right. So now they're in front of us tonight for a new, correct?
So somebody explain to me how this plan didn't work.
I can't explain that to you.
This is what they, this is what they got granted. This is what they knew they got granted. This is the, the roaring from Mr. Pine. He knew, he didn't do it.
So your specific concern, if I could reiterate, is the plan that was previously approved is not the plan tonight? That's your concern?
It's not the plan. It's not what's going on back there.
Okay.
So.
And what is the plan? Is it the subdivision? Is it the sub, I'm telling you, it's the 7/15/2022.
So that's the plan we're working on?
Yes.
What happened to the old plan?
Aye. Mr. Benoit, you're raising it.
Yes. Madam Chair, the original subdivision plan, I don't believe that showed proposed homes on it.
It showed what?
Proposed homes on it.
It had the lots.
It had the lots with the, with the gradation for the construction of the roadway and some stormwater.
Grading associated with the approved subdivision road.
Right.
No house locations.
Correct.
But it's not in front of me, so I really don't want to be looking at additional plans.
Okay. So 2017, they knew they couldn't do what they're doing. How are they being allowed to do it?
They're applying for an exemption in front of this board tonight. That's how they're able to do it. They're justifying why they are exempt.
I'm still confused as to why they are not following the original plan.
That's fine.
Who allowed that?
I'm telling you.
Who allowed that to happen to this?
I don't know. I'm telling you, tonight, this is what is in front of us. Do you have any specific questions or concerns?
How was it happening?
How is it happening? They're, they're opening a new public hearing with a new application. That's how it's happening. That's why it's in front of us tonight.
I get it. I think today. I totally understand.
Okay.
But how is the earth removal happening as we sit here without the earth removal permit?
In our packet, we have building permits that were issued that had plot plans.
And I have, hold on, give me a second. And I have from the town council. This goes back a little while to bill.
I can't accept anything that it's unrelated to this filing. So when this was filed, the documents were submitted to the town. So we're not going backwards in time. So specifically for this hearing.
So what was originally granted doesn't matter? Is that basically what's going on?
Correct. Yes, correct.
How, how is that?
That's the way it is. So there's a brand-new application.
That's your answer?
Yes. That is. If you don't have any other questions or concerns, I'll have to move to the next of others.
Your answer is that's the way it is?
Of course.
Good answer.
Of course.
Totally professional.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Yes. Name and address, please.
Dennis Mahalik, Northeast Main Street. Yeah, I'm basically concerned the fact that you guys go ahead and did what he said. You got to give them a permit to do this and then they go ahead and do it without doing anything. We come here, meeting after meeting after meeting, and we waste our time. So anybody else in the real world should come here, shouldn't even bother coming because no matter what anybody does as far as a go-to-go, they do what they want. They don't have to worry about the planning board. I think the planning board stinks, to be honest with you. And you might not like it, and you don't like it either. I can tell you by the way you turned around.
So do you have any specific questions?
Yeah, I do.
What is your question?
Her house is getting pelvisized by the north wind that comes down every time the gravel blows. And I mean, it gets, and she's away from it, not close like these people are. These people went and talked about it. Her house was, her time and her house was covered with dirt.
What is the address?
48 Davis Street.
That dirt coming right up that hole and it goes right up over the hill and it lands on her house and on the trees and on everything that's out there. It's ridiculous.
Okay. Do you have pictures?
I don't have them on me, but I did talk, I'm sorry, Megan Mahalik, 48 Davis Street. I did talk to Mr. Benoit back on, I think I called and then he called me back and had a follow-up email from him on Thursday, May 5th, 2022. I called about the sand. I called about the trash. But I was picking up all over my yard, huge plastic sheets of plastic, Tyvek's paper, you name it, all over my yard. I'm dealing, you, this building, the removal of all the trees on the top of that hill have completely changed my environment. It has completely changed my yard, my house, that I worked very hard for and followed every single thing that the planning board told me I had to do when I built this house. That my house isn't even where I wanted it because I followed what I had to do. But yet, sure, take more land, create more of an environment that is not only, I mean, I can't even sit out in my yard sometimes because that wind, when we get a good wind, I'm afraid I'm going to get hit, pelted by trees. It is so bad. Not, and the sand and the dirt. I have a dirt driveway. I know what it's all about, but I also water it. I do have the dust that Mr. Benoit sent me, the dust plan, which none of that, I mean, I mean, some of it, I'm sure they have done. I actually left him, was out of the country after I talked to Mr. Benoit, but I mean, this was dated back April 15th, 2022, the dust prevention plan for Sleepy Hollow lots 13 to 16. I'm not going to read the whole thing, but number one, during the week while activities are going on, we will apply, water is needed. Now, I've also talked to a few other people in this, in the crowd right now, who sent me videos after all of this of dirt and sand and trash blowing around in their yards and behind them. And then there was a thing about providing each a butter, $250 a month for interior house cleaning while this was going on, and $100 a month for exterior pressure washing.
Okay. If I could pause you for one second. Applicant is, are you aware of that condition?
Yeah, that was, so we're willing to do that, that and what we've been doing. I can't speak to the trap. We're not the builder.
Missed it.
Sorry.
Please look to me.
We're not the builder. We can speak to the builder.
For the interior cleaning though, the 250?
Yeah, we can do that and perfectly willing to do that. We have been under a cease and desist for a period and had stopped, and that was something we proposed and we have just started up again, so.
So that wasn't happening before the cease and desist?
Yeah, we weren't working. We had sprayed, so what we said we'd do is spray every weekend with an Earth Stop 500, I think it's.
I have that right here.
Yeah, Earth Stop 500 on a weekend to minimize dust and hopefully stop it. During the week, we have to take off that Earth Stop 500 and then proceed with our work and just use best practices. But we, we are willing to do that moving forward.
So if you could read that condition one more time for me, the sentence about the 250 interior cleaning?
So it's number three and number four. Number three, provide each a butter, $250 a month for interior house cleaning. And number four is provide each a butter, $100 a month for exterior pressure washing. Honestly, I don't even really want this. I just want this to stop at this point. We have been dealing with this for so long. I just don't know what to say anymore. I feel so let down by this town that you're just like, sure, go ahead. We're going to give you this waiver. It's okay. We don't care about our people that pay the taxes in this town. It's fine. It's frustrating.
Okay. Anyone else in the audience have questions or concerns regarding this hearing? Anyone online? Yes, please, thank you.
Mike Hendrickson. I live on 137 Maple Street. This is my daughter-in-law.
17 Monroe Street.
17 Monroe Street. And I have three grandchildren over there and they're very small and I worry about their safety. And that's not just like trying to, you know, make it dramatic, but they're, I was just over there this last weekend and what they're proposing to do is physically dangerous for her, for her piece of property. And I encourage you as board members to go over and take a walk and see and ask me, you know, explain to me that you want your grandchildren in that environment. It's, it's not going to be good and I worry about it. And I talked to Mr. Pine personally many years ago and he offered what I thought was a reasonable solution. I won't get into it, but he was going to give a group of people here some property to help compensate and he reneged on that. It was verbal, so there's no sense in talking to Mr. Pine because he obviously isn't going to honor his commitments unless they're on a piece of paper signed. I'm very nervous to be here, as you can probably tell, but I'm very, very concerned for my family, my grandkids, their investment. These people are making good money and they're allowed to. They're allowed to use their property, but it's a detriment of the rest of the community. They're losing. Their properties are being devaluated by this improvement and I just don't know what our recourse is. How is, I don't know what else to tell you. It's, it's a very bad situation. The dust, yes, I was there blowing around. My daughter-in-law has videos. We have, I encourage you to walk the site.
At my house?
Yeah. Walk behind her house. Take a look at what they proposed to do and say, jeez, would you, would you want that? There's, there's the only fence that's there now that protects the kids is one she put up and.
So there is a proposed six-foot fence?
Yeah.
Behind House 17? And also we have a peer review response on safety. Mr. Benoit can share that with us.
Well, there's nothing there now. Only the fence that she put up. I mean, all these words are words, but they're not being followed through and they're not being policed. I'm very upset about it and if one of my grandkids gets hurt, who's going to, oh, gee, we should have done something. That's too late.
Have you seen the plan with the six-foot fence?
I've seen plans in this. This gentleman right here said, the plan almost seems useless. We talked about one, I was here in the original meeting.
Please, one person.
You're not following the original plan.
Okay. One person at a time, please.
I, I have to kind of, I mean, I don't, I understand, the law is the law, but there must be something that protects unsafe situation, a six-foot fence? That's, tell me a six-foot fence that's going to be there 10 years from now. I mean, what about the next family that's going to come along? I mean, you're talking about temporary solutions. This is a permanent situation you're creating. It wasn't there, it's being created. And I, I just. And I, I just, I agree with these people. How it's being allowed, I don't know. Sometimes common sense overtakes. What are the statutes for it?
Okay, thank you.
I don't know how else to express it.
Yes, sure.
Sir, uh, looking at this plan, I, I know that you, you wanna say, plans are plans, you do what you want, but looking at this plan that's proposed, do you have a safety concern for what is being proposed in this plan?
Yes, there's an extreme...
Can I just ask what your safety concern is with, with what's being proposed?
First off, my daughter-in-law tried to explain this to me, and it sounds like what this gentleman said. It's gonna be an extreme steep grade right from their property line. And my grandkids, I mean, think, you want your grandkids out there? The fence is what's gonna be the, keeping them from rolling down the hill or being injured in some other way?
So I'm gonna gather that your concern is that the chain link fence isn't enough of a barrier to provide safety between your property and the lots that are being developed?
Again, I encourage you to take a walk out there, take a look.
Is the fence there right now, sir?
There, there is no fence.
So it's there?
Let me, let me...
Sir, no, no, let me...
Let me correct that, though, there is a fence there, but one she put up, which is...
Okay, so there's a fence, so we have a, something in front of us that's being proposed, a six-foot chain link fence on the property line in between the house and the development. Do you have a concern that that is not enough to provide a safe barrier?
No, I, I'm concerned that it's not enough, correct.
Okay.
What's, what, if you, I mean, you got a young little boy, what's his first inkling when he gets in the backyard? I wanna climb up the fence? I mean, no, I, I'm not. Not, not because on the other side of the fence is such a steep grade to deal with. You know, if he manages to get over the fence, that's it. I mean, I'm sure, I, I'm, again, I hate to be redundant, but I'm sure you wouldn't want your grandkids in that environment, and this is their home.
Fleishman, do you have a follow-up?
I do have a question.
Yes.
The chain link fence that is proposed, um, just from my own education, is that the responsibility of the builder or the responsibility of Mr. Pine?
If you wanna...
Mr. Pine.
Mr. Pine, the owner.
Okay, and what is the required timeline for that to be installed?
That could, that could really go up sooner than later, we'll have some more trees to clear. So hopefully we've been able to...
And who would maintain the fence?
Excuse me, I'm sorry, name and address again?
Seventeen Monroe.
Were you, okay. What was your question?
And who's supposed to maintain this fence that I do believe is inadequate?
Um, it's going to be on the owner's property, so it would be their required maintenance.
So whoever they're, whoever buys the property is gonna be in...
Yes.
Well, we all kinda know how that all works out.
Okay. Desmond over here first, please.
So my name's Chris Pavo, I live at 21 Monroe Street. Um, I just wanna give a little bit of background on myself, so the board understands what I do for a living. I've been in the plumbing and heating industry for 16 years. I'm a member of the Mass PHCC, as well as a member of the Mass and Revival ASP organizations. I've worked in the plumbing and heating industry for a long time. I've worked hundreds and walked hundreds of new construction and retro construction job sites in my years in this industry, from 30-story buildings in Boston to low-income housings in South Providence. I work in Massachusetts, Rhode Island, Vermont, Connecticut, New Hampshire, and Maine. And in my 16 years in this industry, never have I been on a job site where the town or city allowed such a steep grade behind new construction without some form of retaining wall or barrier. I stand before you, or sit before you today, and I ask you to uphold the original decision made years ago and not allow Sleepy Hollow to endanger and affect the quality of life of the residents on Monroe Street. I ask that they cut their grade at least 20 feet from our property lines and install a proper retaining wall. My concern is erosion. So as we're talking about a chain link fence that's gonna have a four-foot buffer over the next 30 years, I've seen damage happen over the last few weeks, or actually before that, because we're in a drought right now. So in the last few months, and a couple of the really heavy rainstorms we have, with massive amounts of erosion coming down those hills into the new properties that are already built over there. So imagine that for the next 30 years. So a six-foot fence on, on not my property, but close to my property line, for a house that I just invested over $100,000 into remodeling, and you're gonna put a chain link fence out there for me to look at for only, in the next 10, 15 years, for it to erode and fall down the hill into somebody else's property behind me? I think it's a little foolish, it's careless, and I think it's dangerous. We need to have something put back there where we can control the erosion and drainage and not have to worry about my shed rolling into somebody's living room. The wind that comes up affects my brand-new roof, my windows, siding, and everything else that's back there. My brand-new vehicle gets sandblasted every single day, it's pretty upsetting. So I'm looking for, as somebody who has an extensive construction background, a reasonable solution to what's happening. Because what I see out there and behind her house, it's pretty poor. Four-feet, five-foot buffer behind a property line, going down a grade like that, it's, it's pretty dangerous.
Where is the shed located on your property? I don't see it on this lot plan.
21 Monroe Street.
Yeah, I don't see it depicted on...
I have it on this, this is the plan, you wanna see, you wanna see this plan?
No, thank you. Where? Number 21 doesn't have any shed.
Yeah.
Um, number 20, number 19 does.
19 does.
Okay, anyone else have any questions or concerns?
I have more concerns than questions. You guys will remember this...
Name and address, please.
Jim Woodward, 19 Monroe Street. You guys will remember this from the last time we had this talk about wind and dust, and originally the planning board had a, uh, I guess, a mission statement on their website for the Town of Douglas, and the mission statement stated, and this was right off of your website from way back, it said, "Our goal is to strike a fair and reasonable balance, between what we feel is the special character of a town and the ability people have to use their own property in a way that is beneficial to them." We, we are townsfolk, these guys are not. Their town is completely different from our town. You guys are going against what you have as a mission statement or had, I can't find it anymore. But you're going against what your original goal was. You're not striking a fair and reasonable balance for our property.
Specifically, do you have a concern or question?
Yeah, yeah, I have, my concern, my concern is you're not doing what's right for us in town.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Megan Mahalik, 48 Davis Street, just one more thing, when we were talking about the fence, on the dust prevention plan, there was also a section that does say, um, that they will provide a four-foot-high vinyl fence on the property line of houses 19 and 21 and a portion of 17, and that's not done either.
Applicant, why was that not done?
The four-foot fence, we, I believe, Matt, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that's what turned into the six-foot fence on the plan.
I think it was a silt-type fence, right? What, what's the specific?
This one says a four-foot-high vinyl fence. I don't know what that is.
At the request of the building commissioner, he wanted a chain link when we drew this plan.
I think the vinyl, I'm not sure what the vinyl is, if it was...
The wood, uh...
A silt or...
An orange one.
Orange kind.
Okay, that's not done either. Oh, it's just for safety or for dust?
I don't know, I was just saying, no, this was supposed to help...
For dust.
To separate the dust, so how would a vinyl fence with holes help dust, I guess?
No, the silt, like the black silt.
Well, this says separate from dust prevention.
It was, it was just mentioned, it wasn't part of the dust control, so that was written incorrectly. It was a barrier, a safety, it was deemed, the intent was to be a safety barrier.
Okay, and can you, so we're gonna address that. So that's an additional condition that hasn't been met from the original approval. So we've got the interior and exterior issue with dust that they were supposed to be providing, and they didn't. Um, and then we've got this fence that was supposed to be put up, so not just a chain link, I think, was dust control.
Excuse me, I'm sorry, Chair, repeat that, please.
I'm, I'm not reading the conditions, but she's saying it's under the dust control section of the...
Could I see that?
April 15th?
So this...
Oh, you have to go through the chairman.
Yeah, go through the chair and get this one.
Those were your words, you gotta go through the chairman, you can't get up out of the chair and do that. I can't bring this to Mr. Pine.
So... The building inspector had asked us to, um, stop work, which we did voluntarily. And then we proposed this once we started up again, um, which we didn't start till two weeks ago. So... Separate from the dust prevention plant, separate from the dust prevention plant. Pine Sand will provide a four-foot-high vinyl fence on the property line of house 1921 and a portion of 17 Monroe Street, see attached, which was, showed it. During further discussions with, with Matt Benoit and the building inspector, they preferred a chain link fence, which got incorporated into this plan.
Okay.
And further, uh, we did not include these documents, or the documents, but the building inspector asked us to prove that the slope was safe. We hired a geotechnical report, we didn't include these with these applications, but the, they, that was peer reviewed and agreed upon that the slope was safe.
Right, so I would like the date in, it was McCarty, correct? So I'd like the date of that memo.
I have that. I'd like to see it. All right, no, I don't.
April, excuse, May?
May 24th, so that addressed the safety. May 24th, and do we, do you have that right in front? Yes, Mr. Benoit.
Madam Chair, so kind of the sequence of events was, we want, we, as, as Mr. Warner pointed out, the building commissioner and I asked for the geotechnical study to prove that this was the safest way to grade this slope. Uh, our peer review consultant actually came back. Well, we mentioned that there were concerns of the neighbors, and we didn't want it to go right to the lot line, so we asked for it to be a little farther away from the lot line. So they showed us a plan, showed it further from the lot line, but it created a steeper slope in our regard, as you have a space. Ended up being a two-and-a-half to one slope, which is actually steeper than the two-to-one slope that's being proposed here. See?
Excuse me, uh, Matt, so you got that in reverse. Our slope is a two-and-a-half to one, the peer reviewer came back with a plan proposing a two-to-one, which our geotechnical consultant would not allow.
Because it was steeper.
Because it was steeper.
Right, no, sorry, my...
Uh, so, the other alternative, obviously, would be, you know, with walls, but that's obviously something that is ball safety and whatnot, so degradation with a rolling hill of a lesser slope seemed to be the best option at the time.
Okay, so the safety was addressed through a peer review. The erosion, what was, what's the update on the erosion?
The erosion was addressed by the peer reviewer, which we agreed to do, which had a, um, uh, specific fertilizers to be addressed. We had the soil tested, the onsite organic material tested, and the peer, the peer reviewer had it tested, and then came back with specific recommendation that we agreed to do, with seed, specific seed and specific fertilizer to be sprayed on the slopes at different times.
Okay.
Madam Chair, I apologize if this information, but I do have it here.
Okay, if you could read that for me?
To reflect, kind of what Mr. Warner said, uh, there was guidance here to ensure that the slope is sprayed appropriately with the right seed mix to ensure that it's stabilized. Uh, and there's some technical guidance as to how that's done. I'm not gonna pretend I'm a landscape architect, so, I'll mention here, but I'll provide that later.
Okay.
Do you specifically have a, a timeline when the earth removal and excavation will be completed?
Yeah, I would say, and this has been a process, um, I think about it for a minute. If, if, I think we see, we stopped on our own in April. This work would have been completed if we didn't stop voluntarily, so we would have the entire slope planted by October 15th, late October, which would be great planting season.
So that should finally minimize the dust problem?
Yeah, so we, I hear people about the dust...
You gotta address the board. Follow the rules.
I'm sorry, um, through the chair. I hear, I can speak for Mr. Pine, we hear the concerns about the dust. We can do our best to, use best practices and spray tomorrow afternoon. The earth stop, um, I can't speak, I know the subdivision itself, which we have no control over, is getting seeded as we speak, and the dust coming from around the houses is minimizing on its own. Um, we can, again, work with the builder, and if we come over with a water truck, spray down lots, and pray for some rain, uh, you know...
Yeah, pray for some rain.
So what was the answer for the timeline?
Excuse me?
What was the answer to his question?
We would be planting this planting season, and I define a planting season by the state of October 15th.
Through the chair again?
Yes.
On, on the safety barriers of this chain link fence? I mean, obviously, there's concerns of safety now. Is that gonna be installed anytime soon, or are you waiting for everything to be done? You board the fence?
We need to, we need to, we would prefer to have the top of the slope defined. We can, as we go around, we can work with a fence guy to chase us around and put up, reaffirm and put up another orange caution fence. To minimize that.
Thank you.
So, um, probably 50% of the area, I'm guessing, is still as the road slopes and not the lot slopes. So we haven't, we're not stripping loam over, we're only stripping loam in the areas that we're working. And again, if, if this, if we go back to work, then we can start loaming areas, you know, we haven't completed, and just chase ourselves around.
Okay, Mrs. Ricker.
I just have a couple of questions. Uh, number one, how far onto the property line, from the line, will the fence be? What's your offset gonna be? What, what are you planning on?
Through, through the chair, we asked Gary Air, and I, I believe the stakes are up there, we, we had them lay it out at one foot inside, inside our property, or Sleepy Hollow's property.
Okay, so the plan shows exactly on the property line?
Yep.
That's why I was asking that.
So you're agreeing?
Just to avoid, as we thought about it, to avoid...
One foot offset.
Within, yeah.
The next question I have is, where in or how this ever happens, these individual house lots, will there be a break on each house lot, so then as the homeowner, homeowners move in, it's not gonna be like a condo where it's one continuous link? Because if that's the case, something happens to a fence, the guy's gonna say, well, it's gonna affect my fence, but my fence is fine. So are you planning on double polling or overlap polling on each property break so that when these houses are transferred to ownership, the owner knows, okay, I, this is my part of the fence, and I'm responsible for this part of the fence?
I hadn't given it a thought, but that makes sense. So at the property line, you would have two stakes immediately against each.
Yeah.
Otherwise, you have a community fence, which then nobody's gonna take acceptance for repairing.
If a tree falls, then I'm gonna take it.
Right, so, well, that affected my fence, and so it's a deal where that needs to be a definite break? Uh, so that each land or each lot has its own fence?
Makes sense.
Excellent, yeah.
You know, that way there, then things are covered down the road, especially with that one foot offset. I think that would make a, and on the first, House 17, you said you're talking about a partial. Why only a partial? Why? Or are you just going?
Really, because we could extend that. It's to where the grading kind of stops, really should be over here. This grading softens up right over here.
Well, we don't want to take any additional trees down either on that proposed tree line?
Right. Well, I'm just saying, I mean, make it a, I mean, it's hard stopping a fence in the middle of the property. That's the only reason that I'm staying.
But we could work with number 17.
So, extending through the lot 13, to Lot 13 property line on the left rear?
Yeah, I mean, something I think needs to be worked out there, so it's, and I agree, if it's behind my house, you don't want to see a fence going halfway and then just stop. There should be an agreement on how, how in or what to end that particular section. I mean, off the bat...
Quick question. If I may?
No, I'm sorry, no.
What do you mean, no? Public hearing.
I did not address you.
I asked if I could ask a question.
And I said no.
Okay.
This gentleman was before you. He's had his hand up.
I apologize.
Yeah, I've been hearing about this dust control since this project, on Dennis Mahalik, 415 Northeast Main Street. I've been hearing about dust control since this project started, and I'm hearing about it again, what they're going to do. And I tell you what, I don't think they're going to do it. They're going to get waxed, they're not going to water, you go by Heinz Fit on a windy day, and it's like a dust ball. And it's the same thing there. So, you know, you people as the planning board should be going out and supervising this stuff. Well, I don't know who supervises it, who puts restrictions on it or talks about it, but you should get in there and look at it and do it right, because you're not doing it right. Because if we were, it wouldn't be talking about dust right now. Like I say, from 2017, "Oh, we're going to put water down, we're going to take care of all the dust." Yeah, and then I'm hearing it again today. "Oh, we do this, we do that." I guarantee you, next windy day, it's going to be dust falling all over that place.
It's the zoning enforcement officer's responsibility to enforce the conditions of the permit, not the planning board.
Okay, well, excuse me for that.
Okay. I know you had a question in there.
Yeah, you asked me about this, that zoning.
Oh, no, yeah, but that, I've had that experience too, and I tell you what, that doesn't work either, because I've had the same problem about certain things, and it doesn't work. I have an issue, another issue going on, and they kind of just, "Oh, yeah, we'll take care of it," and then just falls to the wayside. Same with the dust. It's, it's fall to the wayside, unless they change their operating procedures.
Yeah, the applicant is stating that they are going to control the dust and spray as in accordance with the approved...
And that's what they said the first time, "Well, we're going to do this," and they did. Because if they did, they wouldn't have a dust problem, wouldn't they, Greg?
So, through the chair, I will state that we cannot stop the dust 100% of the time. Whenever there's a lull over there, we have sprayed the Eco Stop, just as we do over at Lackey Dam Road, and we spray 10, 20 acres at a time. And it works for probably two or three months, and we've always sprayed over there prior to the winter. And we did, when we voluntarily stopped work, we immediately sprayed the whole area, and hopefully, that minimized the dust, what's coming from around the buildings I can't speak of. So, we will continue to do that as we have.
I think we need to speak of the dust around the buildings also. So, I'm sure the zoning enforcement officer would be able to enforce if there's a nuisance of dust. So, the builder also needs to adhere to the requirements. So you can relay that message, but that's a typical situation where there's a nuisance. It doesn't matter if there's a permit or not, or what have you. Okay. All right. Name and address, please, and a question.
19 Monroe Street. My question, is town council present?
He is.
He is? Who is he?
You're going to have to ask through, what is your question?
So my question is, has the town council of current reviewed all the town council passed from Blakeman, Barowski, Mead, and Talbot? Has he reviewed all of their findings and agreed with all or disagreed with all of their findings?
Mr. Winner? Attorney Winner?
President, Madam Chair.
Hi, did you hear the butters' question? Have you reviewed the past documentation from the town council on this property?
As I understood, the question is, have I reviewed findings? I'm not sure what findings the speaker is referring to. I'm familiar with the documentation in this case, and Madam Chair and board members, Mr. Benoit, as you know, I represent you, so I've been asked to review those in order to provide support to the board.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
So specifically, I have an opinion regarding earth removal there dated May 17, 2016, where the council at the time did not believe what's going on was allowed to happen. Does the council current believe what's going on is allowed to happen under the earth's removal guidelines?
It's, it's in front of us. Mr. Benoit, did you?
Madam Chair, I actually am not going to speak on behalf of the town council, but I'm looking at the same letter that Mr. Winter was talking about. This was in reference to whether or not the project needed an earth removal permit supplement to the construction of the roadway.
Oh.
And the determination was that it did, and the applicants did file an earth removal permit for the construction of the roadway.
So that was out of context? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the audience have any questions or concerns? One more time, please, name and address.
Mike Hendrickson, 137 Maple Street. Earlier, I listened to this gentleman with the computer explain the removal of the earth from behind my daughter-in-law's house. And my question, I don't know if I'm allowed to ask this question, but is it necessary that it's being removed, or are they just removing it so that they have a better environment for their, their, their construction? That's pretty much my question.
Thank you. To the applicant.
So, we're removing them according to this approved plan to grade the lots to allow for a proposed house.
Okay.
It's not just for convenience.
Please, you cannot speak out of turn. Please, no, 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 sir.
Chris Pavo, 21 Monroe Street. Who approved the plan?
It's in front of us tonight.
Well, okay.
And it's been peer reviewed.
So, we just said that it was reviewed, and there's work being done behind my house right now without an approved permit. Two years ago, when I started working on my house on Thursday, doing a full remodel there, and Town Hall was not open, I'm sorry, it was on Friday, and Town Hall wasn't open on Friday, and allowing me to pull my permit, when Monday came, I got hit with a fine for doing work in my home beforehand. If there's work going on behind my house right now with no permit being approved, how is that being allowed?
There is a permit, building permit issued.
A building permit that's allowing for earth removal?
The construction of the home, and it has the...
That's not to pour a foundation, that's earth removal, that's a mining operation.
Okay, thank you.
There's no response to that?
There is, I did give you a response. There is a building permit that was issued for the lot showing...
So the building permit is allowing earth removal?
Yes. Yes.
That's not out of the code.
It was explained to these guys, that's an ambiguous statement. That was explained to these guys before.
Please...
No.
You'll have to leave the room if you are not in order. Okay, thank you. Okay, Board? You were a little late.
I'm late, so I'm going to recede myself on it right now, although I've been on this week before. What are you asking?
I'm asking any questions.
Do I have any more questions?
Yes.
No. So, October 15, I hope it's all done by then. I would say, please work with the neighbors and try to minimize the dust as much as you can. Address the safety concerns soon.
Mr. Zwicker?
Yes.
Mr. Slashburn?
I do. I'd like to know how the Section 6.1.3.1, Section A, applies to all of this. In other words, yeah.
Applicant?
Where, exactly. No, to the town council.
Okay.
I'd like to know, to the town council. How this all applies here on the legality side, where we do allow the earth removal for building a house. No different than me buying a house lot, if I want to dig it out to the line, I own it to the line. I've had houses built around me, right to the line, they put the slopes in. It is what it is. It's their land, not mine. So how does this all apply in this particular project with these house lots?
Madam Chair, would you like me to respond to that?
Yes, please, thank you.
Happy to, and thank you for your question, sir.
Thank you.
So, I'm going to answer it a little differently than you asked, because I see that question as one of jurisdiction. So I'm not going to get into the analysis of what's customary and incidental, because that's a decision that your building official makes. So, it was a cease and desist order. Part of that was that the developer needed to apply for an earth removal permit, so that the official that interprets your zoning bylaw did so and determined that an earth removal permit application needed to be filed. So here we are, now we're here on that application. So the question of whether or not it's exempt, in one sense, the decision's been made, and in the other sense, it's moved, because here we are. So, respectfully, I don't think the answer, the legal answer is what 6.1.3.1A means, because all that relevance, because here we are, we're hearing this application. So, I mean that with all due respect, but that decision's been made. So now that you are here, you can consider whether or not waivers are appropriate or the merits of the application, consistency in subdivision, plenty of the other things we want to discuss. But with respect to jurisdiction, the one town official that has the authority to make it made a decision, and the one body that his decision can be appealed to is the zoning board, not planning board. So that question of whether or not it's exempt is then asked to answer, and now we're here on an application.
Does that clarify things?
To a point. So, going with the earth removal, if it has to be so, does that put all the buffers back in, or is that where the waivers come into play? Or how is that all coming into play? By doing so, then you can't build a house. There's already been a permit given to build a house, so you can't do one without the other.
Right. So I think that we're recognizing that there's been additional earth removal beyond the subdivision approval, however, there's safeguards in place pursuant to that approval that are sufficient to satisfy intent, purposes, goals of the earth removal bylaw. So we can condition, we can waive and condition.
Okay.
To maintain that.
Is that something to my comment, Madam Chair?
Yes.
I mean, this is essentially an after-the-fact application. A building permit did issue, it was revoked, and there was a cease and desist order that came along with that. And so, part of releasing that cease and desist was that they applied for this earth removal permit after the fact, so you could consider that very questionable.
So, anything else? No. One last question, sir, if you have a question.
Yeah, Dennis Mahalik, 415 Northeast Main Street. That means if I own a piece of land and I decide to buy a bunch of house, do a bunch of house lots, I don't have to get a gravel removal permit, is what I'm hearing here. As long as I get building.
That's not a question subject to this filing.
Oh, it's simple.
Okay, that's more of a statement. Okay, thank you. Board, do we want to vote on the waivers or close the public hearing? Mr. Benoit, what's your preference?
Madam Chair, just in my opinion, obviously, I've heard the butters state a lot of concerns regarding dust control and kind of dispassion over the project now, but I would really like to hear proposed concession from them, or what they're, what they'd actually want to be done. I mean, think of it this way, from my perspective, shutting down the project leaves a giant sand pit to let dust flow over the law. So, I'm looking for what, I'm curious what concessions, or at least what ideas can be proposed from, from those butters, the board members, as remediation to try to make all parties' sense. And I'm just curious, I haven't, we've actually heard that.
We've heard safety, so there's a six-foot chain-link fence we'll be running along, the spraying with the seed mix to prevent erosion. It's instead of a two-and-a-half-to-one slope, they're doing a two-to-one slope.
Quite sure, sure.
You're doing a two-and-a-half, yes. Yeah, so that was a concern. Trash in the yard was a concern, and I think that there's a little bit of a disconnect between the builder around the existing lots. Excuse me? I'm sorry. There's dust control. I do believe that they are subject to nuisance.
Madam Chair, may I ask a question? When you say trash, is it construction debris?
Yes, yes.
Or is it trash? They're two different things.
No.
I believe it's...
It's construction.
Construction, tieback or something.
Tieback, yeah, hold on, I'll wait.
So I think that there, I'm sorry, Mr. Zwicker?
Go ahead.
Okay.
I'll wait.
So I think I heard dust, trash in the yard, erosion, safety, as those concerns. Mr. Zwicker?
Yeah, I'm just going to say, and Mr. Benoit, I think, found it from way back when this project started, I said this day would come. Because I knew the development, the way it was made out, was the only way legally to do it. But once the house lots are approved, it changes the whole scope of everything, because now you're dealing with individual house lots. And just like everybody else, like I did in this town, you have the right to build your house. You have the right to buy a plot of land and build it. So, I understand a lot of the concerns, but at one point in time, everybody did the same thing. So, then went into an area that was all woods, or whatever it was, cut the trees down and built a house. The big thing here, concern, is the dust, and I do understand on the grade, I've got grandkids, too. I told them to stay on my yard and not roll down the neighbor's hills. That way there, they don't get in trouble and nothing happens, and there are no fences. So it's a situation where the dust control and the fencing and all that needs to get done, I think, quickly now rather than later, to prevent any issues and problems. But I personally can't see denying a person to build and live in the town of Douglas.
Okay, thank you.
They don't live in the town of Douglas.
Anyone else?
Madam Chair, I believe, Val?
Yeah.
I believe you had, there was a recommendation from him for, instead of the slope, doing a retaining wall?
The concern, can I speak?
Yes.
It's...
Name and address.
Thank you for correctly pronouncing my last name. It's Chris, it's Chris Pavo, 21 Monroe Street. Yeah, the concern is the slope. You know, planting seed, that's ridiculous, you know? Drive up 146, when you go by the shops at Blackstone, there's clearly, that wall's probably 200 feet high, you know? Not having something there that is permanently going to hold that in place is a severe concern, especially when my leach field is leaching through that earth and out of that slope. That's, it's, it's an issue. I deal with engineers and architects every single day. I cannot imagine how this is being allowed to happen without having some form of retaining wall. I don't have children, so my concern as far as a fence goes, I just want my land to not fall, or my shed to not fall into my neighbor's living room, you know? Or my leach field to fail.
Okay. So you could, can you speak on the geotech and also with or without a retaining wall?
Yeah, so the geotech evaluated the slope, which was the building commissioner's concern. So, happy to supply that report. Matt has that. A lot of discussion... A lot of discussion about that. The retaining wall, I'm not sure where you'd put the retaining wall.
Well, speak to the purpose, if there is a plus to having the retaining wall. And what did the geotechnical report say, if any?
The geotech preferred that there was, we discussed the retaining wall, the geotech preferred that there was not a retaining wall.
Is that in writing?
I'd have to read the report. No, that was discussed at a meeting with the building commissioner, Matt, the geotech and Gary Aaron-Hall's non-engineers. So just to a point of fact, if you go out there now, the road slope around the cul-de-sac is steeper than what's proposed on these lots. And that's the approved subdivision plan.
Okay.
Can I just make a comment to that, please?
Sure.
Chris Pavo, 21 Monroe Street. That's understandable, and yes, I fully understand that what's there now is steeper than what is being proposed. My problem is, is it's right now, it's like 30 feet, 40 feet off of my property line. What is going in front of you guys to approve now is going to be right on my property line. So erosion at 30 feet, it's going to, I'll be dead and gone before that's an issue. But when it's right up against my property line, that's, that's a severe concern.
He's talking about around the cul-de-sac?
Yep, which is what's there existing.
30 feet away from?
So, yeah, because behind my land hasn't really been touched so much yet, so because he had, they haven't, you haven't approved the full, you know, demo to be done or whatever. So I still have a lot, if you were to stand on my property line, there's still probably 30, 40 feet before it drops. And yes, it's pretty extreme what's there now. And I understand what will be there later will be less, but it's also going to be a lot closer. And again, when a leach field is leaching out back there through that land, seed or no seed, it's not going to matter.
That is why we addressed and had a geotech engineer look at the slope.
Okay, okay. Can that answer your question?
Yeah.
Okay.
The fence is going to be, you're saying, one foot off? Then from that point, how far before you would even start the slope? Another couple feet? Another four feet? Another two feet? Another five feet?
I believe the top of the slope is approximately five feet from the property line.
So that's going to be guaranteed in that five feet?
Is that?
We'll build it according to this plan.
Well, it's.
So that's why I'm.
Yeah, so the top of the slope will be five feet from the property line. Is that what you're asking?
Yes.
So you're going to have a one-foot fence and four feet, then you slope?
Then slope.
All the way around, that's good?
Yeah, so, I don't, this isn't to a scale.
Right, and that's why.
So in front of House 17, in front of House 17, it might be 10 feet. I'm not sure. As you go around here, it gets much further from the property line?
Right, but this here is my concern.
This here is five feet.
So 20, behind 21, you're looking at about 20 feet anyway.
I'm very, I'm talking about 19.
19, 20, 21, yeah, probably, the top of the slope probably moves 10-plus feet.
10-plus feet.
And then if you get to House number 25, it's probably pushing, well, there's a 20-foot setback, so it's more than 20 feet from the property line.
Madam Chair, winding up with this, so, sorry. So, there's riprap, and you guys are in the stone business and such, where you get, I could, you know, he's not down the cave crashing waves, you know, sort of eroding to property lines, which in houses sort of fall off, but this is not the case. But still, where you do the one foot and you got four feet, can, can there be some sort of accord where you'll put in some sort of riprap? I mean, he's making a much smaller thousandth scale of the mall up there, but for a certain period of time to help that erosion run off heavy rains, just for a period of some of those, the riprap? No. Leaching, if it's going to leach through sand, it's going to leach through riprap, it's going to leach through a retaining wall, because you have to, you have to put drainage on those retaining walls, otherwise they crack and they have to drain. So I'm not sort of concerned about that as much, but is there something you can do?
So, to the point of the shops at Blackstone, that slope is a one-to-one slope?
Oh, yeah, that's it.
A one-to-one slope and a two-and-a-half-to-one slope are totally two different things. So again, we worked with the town consultant, peer reviewer, who's a landscape architect, incorporated his recommendations, who, and he suggested a two-to-one slope, which we wouldn't do, so we incorporated his recommendations to our two-and-a-half-to-one slope, which is a softer slope. So I'd be willing to do some riprap. We would have to have a geotech look at it.
Sure, I mean, but the consideration that you're considering, or open-minded, is a good thing when it gets really close. I mean, I can see that. I'm not worried about it.
Well, this is 10 feet, this is 10 feet plus away from his property.
Right, he was talking about one foot.
One foot is just a chain link fence.
No, I understand, but then you said about four feet before the slope starts.
Yeah.
But I'm just concerned about adding riprap that high.
I prefer to go, can't, you can't put riprap out the top, it's going to end up at the bottom.
Well, it's going to roll down if you don't get it secured.
Yeah.
Our preference would be go by the geotech and the.
Yeah, well, let them, they're the guys that do it.
Yeah, they have the stamp and they've already reviewed that.
So I wanted to get a response on that, that's why I brought it up.
Madam Chair, just want to go back to that point of query. When our chair review consultant proposed an alternative slope to this, it was with a 20-foot buffer of maintaining the grade that's at the property line now. So he tried to keep the slope starting 20 feet away from the property line, but it led to a steeper slope that's less safe than what's proposed here now at the two-and-a-half. So I guess the question is, is where do you find common ground there?
Okay. Okay, board. Anyone else? We need original questions, so not repeating. I'm going to go to this gentleman, and these two questions are the last questions. So, clear, concise.
137 Maple Street. I hear a lot of talk about setbacks and stuff, but she's at one, she's at 17, and she's a drafts person. I'm not, she, when I, when I look at it, it's like right on the lot line. And if this is going to be the governing document, I would at least like whatever little scrap we get to be documented, not just verbally stated, because verbal statements don't seem to hold much water. And 17 Monroe looks like icy poles right on the line, and.
The fence is on the line shown on the plan. The fence, the chain link fences, but the finished topo is not.
Well, then I'm, then I'm wrong.
452, do you see that number?
No, I don't, I can't read much of it. I just, 452, yeah.
So it's pulled off the property line at that location?
Didn't.
I would say, he's holding at least five feet, five to eight feet, I would say. I don't have, the scale is extremely small.
They're closer than that, even now?
They're roughly four feet off my property line now. Which is like 20 feet you're talking about.
So that's, that's not that 20 feet.
Can you speak to that? Four feet? She's saying four feet off the property line?
Yeah, so the, the top of the slope posed is five feet off the property line.
Okay, but currently?
I haven't measured it.
Okay, okay. So it will be at least five feet shown on this, as shown on this plan?
Be a five feet.
Yep, one more.
Chris Pavo, 21 Monroe Street. I just have a question. If something was to happen in regards to erosion and something from my land or something from my property line happens to my neighbor behind me, who's responsible for that? If at this point, as the town, we're approving for this permit to go through or not, whichever way it may go, if it is approved and they are allowed to cut back to where they are and add in the slope that they are, and something happens, whose responsibility is that? Is it going to be my responsibility to pay for the damage from my shed rolling down a hill? Or is that going to stem back to the town, allowing a permit to be approved for something that shouldn't have been approved in the first place?
Attorney winner?
I saw ESQ up there, I was hoping you could help.
Well, unfortunately, the only answer I can give you is that that's a question you have to discuss with the attorney of your choosing. I can't discuss, or it's not appropriate for me to discuss. Legal remedies, liability issues, and things like that between the town, the developer, and yourself.
Okay, thank you.
See, meaning once the house is owned by a private owner? Is that what he means? In other words, once the house is owned by a private individual and something was to happen, what goes on then?
Yeah, exactly.
That's what I think the question is. Can town council answer that?
No.
No.
He cannot.
No, it's the same question.
Yeah.
Respectively. It's not appropriate for me to give that kind of advice.
Okay. Requesting two waivers, I believe?
Requesting to be exempt from the earth removal permit and to waive the fee for the application.
So there's one waiver. Shall we close the public hearing?
Madam Chair, I just want to verify something. So the earth removal process was previously completed, done, and then fell out of the hands of the planning board? It was, the original earth removal was completed?
Closed out, yes.
Okay. So the issues that, I mean, just speaking of more, the issues I'm hearing now is more of a construction complaint, so I've heard people saying like the planning board does nothing. We've sat here for almost over an hour now listening to this, and I think we've taken upon ourselves to make this hearing happen to address a lot of these concerns that really weren't our concerns. So I'm glad that this happened and we were able to hear the concerns and try to come to a common conclusion.
Okay, thank you.
Chair, why did this get triggered back to us? Where the building inspector issued permits to build a house knowing that you're allowed to remove dirt, but then go file a cease and desist for removing that dirt? Why, why is this all taking place? Is my big question. I mean, why? Can anybody answer that at all?
That's the same question.
That's what everybody on this board right here now is answering. We, the planning board, already approved, moved along with earth removal permit, project done, over. Next step, you go get building permits. Building permits are issued. In that stance, according to this, you can remove dirt. So why is this back in front of us?
Maybe you have.
The dirt should be able to be removed to build a house. Run it over? Council?
That's what we're, we're clarifying at this moment.
It was zoning enforcement officer being zoning board at this point. I thought I've heard it say that before. Not us.
If you want me to respond to that, I'm happy to.
Please.
Madam Chair.
Sure.
I kind of understood that to be a rhetorical question.
Yes.
You are here.
It is rhetorical.
And the frustration of what you've been through and heard, every single thing that's been spoken tonight, but that's not a question that's going to advance this application. So you can certainly have a discussion with the building official and ask the exact same question.
Thank you. All right, board. Can somebody please make a motion?
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg?
Second.
Second by Mr. Marks. All those in favor?
All of state. Thirty Mike's eye.
Mike's look right.
Jake's.
Thank you. Okay. So we have a waiver request for the fee of $3,500 associated with the application that was previously paid. Mr. Benoit, do you want to tell us a little bit what that was specifically for?
Sure, Madam Chair. The fee associated for $3,500 is for services of the board, which engage further peer review of the application itself. Given that some of the review had already been conducted, paid for, etc., and the safety assessment was done, it's up to this board if they want to decide if they will need a further peer review or not. If the board feels does not, then it seems just to be responsible.
Okay, thank you. I will entertain a motion on that waiver. So. Motion made by Mr. Schulzberg to grant the waiver to return the fee of $3,500, second by Mr. Greco. All those in favor?
I will recuse myself. Attorney Mark's eye. Upstate.
Mike Greco, eye.
Mike's look right.
Jake Schulzberg.
Okay. And then the other request is to find that this activity is exempt from the earth removal special permit bylaws under Section 6.1.3.1A, subsection A.
Question to the chair.
Yes.
But can that be done with conditions concerning the safety aspect and everything in it? Or is it a complete just removal of the one, then we'll move forward to further things?
No, it can be conditioned.
Conditioning as far as distance, like the five feet, depends on the holes will be set up and all that kind of stuff?
Yep, so.
There will be at least five feet from the property lines. The fence would be at least one foot from the property line. Each house lot will have its own break, or not break, but its own pole sets. So each house lot would be an individual fence and not a combined community fence, at least. Then on the dust control, I don't know how the board feels on what you want to do there.
I would say a reiteration of strict enforcement of the previous condition. And I would also recommend that the checks be sent. No. The 250 and the 100, if that's.
Yeah, what about that silt fence?
The vinyl fence?
Yeah.
Well, I think the condition should be that that main fence and stuff gets put up as soon as possible. That would be almost an immediate deal, especially on the safety concern, and get the top of that hill seeded. That'd be number one.
You're saying, Mike, are you saying put up a safety fence immediately, or put up the chain link fence immediately?
Get that, get that, the main fence done up. Get it complete. And to speak to the halls, what are the, Lot 17?
The vinyl fence, was it a silt fence or was it a white vinyl fence?
The original intent was a silk, white vinyl fence?
Mm-hmm.
The request of the building commissioner was a, was a chain link fence.
Okay.
So I'm seeing the chain link fence as more of a safety, where I'd like to maybe see a silt fence as well for dust control.
Okay, that's what I was envisioning, would that?
I'm sorry, just, I'm not quite sure.
Up against the chain link. Sorry.
Yeah.
Well, I think the final, you know, I'm looking at this as a final project, as a house, there's going to be a chain link fence to safely be a perimeter between Monroe Street residences and Joseph Road residences. But as the construction is going on, there is a concern of dust. So I think a silt fence should be installed as well.
We can request a higher silt fence.
Yeah, something like that for dust control, in addition to the dust control.
We can get that very quickly from.
Okay, that's good. Great. Four foot?
I don't know. I don't know what a, what a standard silt fence for construction.
Three foot.
Three foot, I believe.
Three foot, okay.
Especially where that's at the top of a hill, that should.
Okay. With three foot.
And we had also talked earlier here this evening about a conversation with House, I think, number 17? On how to end that, how to end that fence, in that particular property?
And.
We should end or take it right to the end, to the property line.
Two.
And the other question I have to the chair, who would be the person responsible, responsible for making sure that the slope? for making sure that the slope isn't greater than what is stated? Would that be on the outbuild?
An as-built.
The as-built will show it?
Mm-hmm.
Madam Chair.
Yeah.
Would the board consider requesting that the out, and engage a consultant or choosing to monitor the project?
Well, public hearing's over.
Right, now this is a condition we can-
Aren't they already engaged?
There's no further response to the engagement services.
It should be at least in this stage, this area.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes. What was that specifically? To engage a peer review or a consultant?
Sure.
Site person.
Gauge a consultant.
Take notes to make sure everything's built.
Sure. The plan is built and of course-
Right.
And sure. You can still-
Then there was one more with the trash.
Yeah.
That's really going to get nailed down because with the wind and everything.
And I don't want to hear that it's not the applicant that's here, the owner. I don't want to hear that it's the builder.
If I may, and other projects, we've always had to circle going on that. No need for it.
Yes, and-
I agree.
It's an easy one, it could be taken care of.
Seemingly.
Seemingly, it should be.
Just back to the fence, so it's going to be a silt fence going up, and immediately a, a safety fence going up, in addition to working on the steel link as, like, as it's going on?
So, we would, we'll call SNM Farms tomorrow. They'll be out, probably early next week. We'll talk to a fence contractor and get them there as quick as they can physically make it and have materials.
Right, so I would envision the silt fence goes up, the chain link fence goes, installs, and then the work begins, right?
If that's what's the best-
We'd like to put the silt fence up immediately and continue with our-
If I may, Madam Chair, is there something that you can put, once that chain link fence is up right away, that you adhere something to the bottom three feet, whether it's by zip ties or any other chain, that is of a nature like the silt fence, but doesn't have to be separately put in, but it adheres to the fence?
I'm not aware of that.
No, that's not going to probably work.
There are things. No, because just the only thing I'm thinking is if the ground where the fence is going is prepared and ready to accept a chain link fence with, you know, possible concrete date. So I'm thinking maybe immediately, at least, the vinyl orange construction fencing has a safety barrier, until the ground is ready to have a chain link fence.
Well, it's going to be one foot, then four feet.
Yeah. So if the ground is ready for a chain link fence, I'd like to see a chain link fence.
Yeah, I can't speak to the supply chain issue.
Yeah, matter of speak.
So if not, you want a safety fence?
Yeah, it, you know, if, if a chain link fence can't get put in, reasonably ASAP, that something, you know, your typical orange vinyl construction fence-
Right, they have it all deep everywhere. So, we'll, what I propose, we'll call SNM Farms, get the tallest orange caution, orange silt fence that we can get. We currently have orange caution fence up there.
Oh, it's already there? The orange silt fence?
Just because I was hearing concerns that there was nothing there. I think there was comments that there was nothing there except for a property owner put up their own fence.
Okay.
So if there's nothing there, there should be something there.
Okay.
I haven't, I haven't gone out there, so I don't know, but if there's nothing there, there should be something there.
Okay.
That's just the typical construction. It doesn't have to be orange, but-
Right. The safety fences are not generally orange, I mean, they're like the-
Yeah, well, there's a silt fence and then there's-
They make an orange silt fence.
Yeah, but what I'm saying is, you're looking out, the neighbors look out in the backseat, orange, it's kind of, you know, something of a more standard color.
It's a, it's a concern for their safety, for the fence.
But the silt would also do, you know, you're trying to, that's the sand there, the chain link. You're saying if they can't get the chain link, do something else right away.
For safety, because there's safety concerns.
Mm-hmm.
And to the Chair, on that chain link fence, was it going to be black vinyl, was it going to be galvey, was it going to be green vinyl?
I would propose a lot black or a green vinyl.
Okay. I think that would be better.
I think, yeah, it needs to be a vinyl, not just a galvey. Something, I mean, you are putting in a border fence, and normally, all the ones I've been around and had in years past, put up something so everybody can kind of agree.
More like a lambs.
I've had a chain link fence, or vinyl coated.
Yeah.
To the Chair?
Yes.
If there is a person that is designated to oversee all of this, who will they then report those findings to or the ongoing progress?
To Mr. Benoit.
To Mr. Benoit.
Mm-hmm.
And so then you will then update us in terms of what their findings are, and that'll be part of a public forum for a butters to beer?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
Updates will provide them as part of our agenda. Correspondence in the package, and if you feel need to, or the judge, to the record is certainly abroad.
Okay, thank you. So, we'll keep a close eye on this. Okay. Any other conditions? Should I read them?
Yeah, they've got a lot, so.
Uh, grading at least five foot from property lines, fence one foot off property line. Each house will have a break in the fence, in the chain link fence. Chain link fence with a three-foot silt fence, at least three foot, black or green vinyl chain link. Strict adherence to all dust, all conditions for dust control, number 17, and the chain link at the corner of the property line. The current builder to adhere to dust and construction debris removal and control that to keep it on the job site, required as-built. Applicants agreed to engage a consultant to ensure it's built in accordance with the design presented tonight.
Are we going to add, or do the interior or exterior cleaner? As addition or-
Yeah, yes. So, as previously mentioned-
250 and 100?
To the butters, a check for $250 per month for interior cleaning and $100 for exterior cleaning as ASAP.
Until the slopes are stabilized.
Yeah.
Once you have grass down.
The slopes are stabilized. And can we put a date of October 15th as an undate?
Yep.
Okay, so you have until October 15th, and everything should be stabilized. That would be your deadline.
And the recommendation that the slope stabilization use the seed mix as recommended in the May 25th, 2022, McCarty. Correspondence.
What?
Correspondence.
Correspondence.
Yep.
Okay. Does anybody want to take a stab at the motion? It would be that the board would find the project exempt.
From the, before I make, so it's going to be exempt from the tent if I make that motion?
Mm-hmm.
But we're renting-
I apologize for interrupting. Can I just clarify, or, and I think what I just heard is you said you were going to make a motion that it's exempt. Now that it's exempt, there's no special permit required at all, and so my question is, what are you attaching the conditions to? If you find it exempt, technically, they don't need to be here. So if you make the motion under 6.1.10, initiate the permit, and just make these conditions as a waiver, then they attach to a decision.
Right.
Are you following me, did I explain that?
So, yeah, so we grant that waiver, then there's nothing-
It would be sort of a contradiction, if you say it's exempt, but then condition it. Well, if it's exempt, then you don't have any jurisdiction, it shouldn't be in front of you. So I think it'd be more appropriate to do it under 6.1.10. So just a friendly suggestion, and that way you're issuing a written decision pursuant to the bylaw, and you are granting willing subject to the conditions that you just listed.
I can't hear.
Check them.
What he's saying is, if we're going to have conditions, we actually need to vote on it.
He couldn't hear.
I didn't hear what he was saying.
Okay. So we, we want the motion to grant the special permit with the waiver of, in accordance with 6.1.10, which is special permit relief, strict compliance with the requirements of this bylaw may be waived by special permit only when the, in the judgment of the board, such action is in public interest and not inconsistent with earth removal zoning bylaw. In waiving strict compliance, the board may require such alternative conditions as will serve substantially the same objective as the standards waived. So-
We can apply conditions to that.
The motion would be to grant the special permit.
No, they're just a waiver request, though. So we do the 6.1.3.1.
So it's an exemption request. So we're granting it in accordance with 6.1.10. Yes?
Point of clarification, so if, if that is the case, we're looking at granting permit, there are 15 separate line items for conditions in the building bylaws that we should probably review before we're going to grant. And I don't mind doing that. We have to decide whether or not we're going to be applying all those conditions or any or none of those conditions.
So, I'm going to entertain a motion to waive sections.
Section 6.1.6 is the conditions, and it lists 15 different conditions. One is the requirement for a bond.
So-
Do you want, do you want to do it as a group, or?
If possible, Madam Chair. I think it'd be wise for us to choose which conditions would apply.
Okay. If you could read them out, and then, so there was a so moved by Mr. Schultzberg-
For the bond.
For the bond.
To waive the bond?
Waive the bond.
Seconded motion.
Motion's made and seconded. Mr. Zwick, are all those in favor?
All upstate.
Thirty Mike's eye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike's right.
Mike's right.
Jake Schultzberg.
Madam Chair.
I'll entertain a motion to waive.
Condition two is a permanent standing condition inspection operation made at reasonable hours of each progress. It's a standard condition that the board can conduct inspection.
Okay, skip that.
Excavation may be within 100 feet of existing public way or adjacent property line.
Do I hear a motion?
So what is this, this one's?
We have the requirement that it-
Put this earth removal requirement up.
Yeah, this, this puts on a requirement. Which is waived.
So, and I'll entertain a motion to waive number three.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
Seconded.
Seconded by Mr. Zwickar. All those in favor?
Upstate. Thirty Mike's aye.
Mike Greco, aye.
Mike's right.
Jake Schultzberg.
Madam Chair, with us all here, do we have to do a roll call?
We still have Zoom people?
I thought we were doing that because we have members online.
Yeah. It's a habit.
Yeah. It would make it quicker to go over.
Well, we can group them if we, if you want to grab the book from Mr. Benoit and make the motions.
We'll just keep truckin'.
We'd do it a lot faster if we just do the hot, yea, yea, nay. I don't see the reason everybody doing roll calls.
Okay.
Number four is, antenna shall not be within 100 feet of a wetland. I don't believe any of this is for that one.
So, so that, if you want to group them, I'll just say number four.
Number five is, no areas should be excavated so as to cause accumulation of freestanding water unless it's per, unless the porch shall permit creation of a pond in there. No excavation should be made at less than 10 feet above the annual high. It's a test, because it's a little bit. On topsoil, subsoil stripped from operations, operation areas should be stockpiled, seeded with an erosion control seed mixture. I almost have to ask the applicant, that's what I'm having to stockpile.
We are having stockpiles, we will seed them, because we have to repress a little bit of it.
Sheltered buildings erected on the premise, personal storage, equipment of the square of public view, that's all covered through subdivision control. Nine is excavation operations shall be determined by the board, and no one should exceed the total of 10 acres of time. I think the four lots, total 10 acres.
Three.
Trucking routes and methods shall be specified by the board, as government.
Go over that, Tom.
All access roads linked to public ways treated as super material to reduce dust and mud for distance to the way.
Or just the-
Access roads constructed in angle, and public roads that be constructed as implied. Standard measures except the roadside warnings of truck entering, I believe, we may already have those. The area of operation must clearly be marked by the applicant. Operator shall immediately clean up any spillage on public ways, conditions for something. So it looks like we're trying to keep these. Second. Applying the condition of the permit shall contain the condition inspection, topsoil and subsoil seeded, it's being stockpiled. And access roads linked to public ways treated as super material to reduce dust and mud for distance to the way.
I'll entertain a motion to waive those sections, if you would like to-
I'm going to do all sections except for two, seven, eleven.
Is that your motion?
That's right.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Zwickar. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. One abstention.
Yes.
Okay. Waivers are voted on. Yes.
I'm sorry, not to overcome the heated matters, but section 6.1.7 on complying with the restoration plan, you might want to just address it. I mean, the restoration plan is the subdivision plan, I assume that's the final condition after it's built out? So just to, so that it's not left sort of unaddressed, you know, unended. Do you want to make any sort of motion on that one?
Mr. Schultzberg?
Aye.
Anyone?
Does town council have a recommendation? Apply the restoration.
Yes, yes. We want, we want to require restoration.
Yes, yep.
It's, so we're keeping that section? So we're not requesting waiver on that section?
No, we are not.
Okay.
Okay, great.
Do you need a motion on that one?
No.
Or just, as part of the record?
Yes. So, board, are we ready to vote to grant the special permit with- vote to grant the special permit with waivers and conditions as previously stated?
Don't move.
Motion made by Mr. Marks. Seconded by Mr. Greco. All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. And one abstention? Hmm?
Counting all of them?
No.
Go on to the next one. Don't deal.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Next, 8:51 PM. 7:15, public hearing continued from July 28, 2022, National Grid application for scenic road special permit.
Chair, I've recused myself.
Thank you. So we had a little issue with a, a butter notification. And there was a couple of questions that we requested from last time. If the applicant would like to just summarize and address those concerns from the previous meeting.
Yes. The, I believe was continued from last meeting because notifications were sent out to everybody. To be honest with you, I'm not sure if those went out. I checked as far as I could at National Grid and was told that they were supposed to go out through the town, so.
They, they were sent. So we had those, the proof in our packet. Did we re-advertise this also?
Madam Chair, in speaking with town council, re-advertising was not necessary so long as it was sent out to the butters in just in time ahead of the public meeting.
Okay.
With the new hearing date and the notice.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Continue.
Thank you. Continue.
There were some concerns regarding pole 17 and 18, which we were able to address by, we were able to move those to avoid being in the, am I standing in the right place?
You're fine.
We were able to move pole 17. I went to restate it, broke the state, so I have to go back actually and restate it. But we moved it out of the opening in some way.
Out of the byway?
Yeah. And then, pole 18, there was concern about have to remove the maple tree next to it. We're able to move the stake far, or the pole far out through a way having to move the tree. The other concern was pole 20, the anchor at pole 20. At this point, we were seeking to just keep the design as is. We did meet with Mr. Zwickar and some of the butters, discuss some alternatives. We decided that keeping the anchor on pole 20 is the best practice as far as design goes. Those were the issues.
Okay. Board, any questions from the stands? And anyone in the audience, questions or concerns? Name and address, please.
John Deta, 50 Oak Street. The only question I have is coming up here tonight, come up, what's that, West Street? I see all the new poles laid out on the ground, which I'm sure you guys have been working at. My concern is it looks like that the poison ivy and the brush and stuff along the side of the road to kind of prepare for those poles installations. It looks like a good section of that road was sprayed. Is that something that's going to happen on Oak Street as well? One of my, one of my questions. I'm just curious.
You have to be honest with you. I'm not sure. I would, I'm thinking probably, at least in the work area.
Yeah, I just saw that there was, I don't know if you guys came here, I don't know if mics are on the way up tonight, but there was a considerable, you could see.
What do you mean, what road?
Yeah, I mean, we have a considerable amount of poison ivy and overgrowth on some of the stone walls and stuff. And I was just concerned if there was, what type of product is being used. I think most of us on that street have wells. Just curious. It doesn't even really pertain to my front yard. I have dead grass, whatever. You can't kill anything more than it is this year, right?
Yeah, yeah.
And the only other concern and question that I have is they're moving the pole in front of my house and I granted an easement, but the things and the concessions to kind of, I didn't get anything in writing as far as, and this is my naive being, just not asking for something in writing, saying, hey, can you tell me you're responsible for moving my electrical service, what you're going to do to, you know, repair my lawn when you're done? I just kind of took their word for it and I'd like to have something, you know, from Blue Wave saying, when we do this stuff on your front lawn, that I have exactly a scope of that project, if that's possible.
National Grid, yes.
Yeah, through the chair. As far as, to go back to the vegetation, I don't, I can't imagine that they're going to just start flash spray everything. But I'm really not sure.
Okay.
As far as the easement goes, I'm here to represent the national grid, so I have to defer to Blue Wave on the poles.
Yep. Did you want to answer that?
Yeah, my name is Chris Knight with Blue Wave Solar. I don't think it directly pertains to the scenic road permit for National Grid, but I'm happy to discuss with you after this if we can.
Yeah, no problem. Sorry. Thank you.
Yes, name and address.
You're saying you're not going to do the change that we talked about?
Name and address.
On pole 20?
Correct. Like I said, I looked into it.
Sorry, name and address, please, for the record.
46 Oak Street?
So as we discussed, I looked into it. I, you know, didn't commit to absolutely doing that. You know, at this point, we're, we're just going to move forward.
Why? Through the chair, I want a full explanation why. We had a, pretty much an agreement between the three neighbors on that pole. That pole's approximately maybe 12 inches from 50 Oak Street's driveway. We had a talk about same distance of putting the pole across the street, which is no big deal. It was agreed upon by the neighbor across the street to eliminate the guide wires in that corner where the driveway is. And I'd given easement to put a guide wire further down. I think what's going on here is they're trying to just move this along when they're making this last minute instead of really looking at the options. It is a scenic road. I think we, the neighbors, should have the priority on a lot of it as far as what's going on on that street.
Is it aesthetically more pleasing on the other side?
Through the chair.
Or is it a safety concern?
It's going to remove the guide wires that are going to be right there, right there at the driveway and on the street.
But now you're not moving?
No.
Removing the wires?
Well, through the chair.
Yep.
To be clear, we didn't have an agreement.
No, discussion.
We had a good discussion. We discussed the possibility of installing a second pole across the street, which would have a couple of guy wires on it and then we'd have to add another guy wire down the street. To answer your question as to why, you know, as far as best design practice, we'd prefer to keep it a straight line instead of jogging across the road. Number one. Number two, we would be adding another pole directly across the street from the one that's already there with two more guy wires on it as well. That's, you know.
Can I get into the chair?
Yeah, one second. Mr. Menoy, can I borrow your book that has the scenic road bylaw on it?
General bylaw.
Oh, sorry.
I'll be right back.
Thank you. I just want to double check something, but.
And if I can't through the chair, the complaint or the excuse of not having the two poles right up the street, these two poles, they're doing the same thing. They have the main pole on one side and then the property pole on the other side. So what it is, I think personally, they're trying to save a buck. They don't want to go through the work to make it all happen. It's last minute, so they're trying to force it through. Because as you know, this pole wasn't on it in the beginning. Now it is, last minute drill, and nobody wants to budge.
Okay, I'm just going to double check. Can you talk a little bit about this 12 inches from the driveway where the, the guide wire is coming down?
I guess I'm not exactly sure what you're referring to.
Okay, sorry, name and address.
John Deta, 50 Oak Street, that is on the corner of my driveway, the top right corner. So technically, the pole somewhere between where my driveway is and the middle of that pole is actually the property line. The only issue that I have is that my wife works at night and she comes down my driveway, if you've ever seen it, it's really steep. If you put a guy wire that's going to kind of run parallel with that property line, I'm afraid that she's going to slide into it and cause some damage to her car. I also have a 30-foot enclosed trailer and if you've ever been on Oak Street, it's tight as it is. And I can get down there, but it puts a little bit of an issue as far as that goes. I think Mr. Zwickar's concern is that if it runs parallel, then when we're plowing snow, we have issues that way. But my concern is that if it runs parallel to the driveway where the property line is, that it's going to be a hazard from, you know, my wife. Again, my driveway's really kind of steep and it's awful in the winter time. And I'm concerned that either getting out or coming in, you know, we're going to have an issue.
Okay. It sounds a little dangerous. So can we talk about that for a second?
Sure. So the, the pole, you know, that Mr. Zwickar was talking about is the existing pole.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
The guy wire, the, the John, sorry. I realized.
Deta.
Is referring to going down the driveway was part of a different solution we were talking about. So the, the existing guy wire that's on, in the design is parallel to the road, may not follow the property line.
Okay.
So it's, it's within the public way.
Okay. Yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Name and address, please.
Justin Mizinski, 45 Oak Street. I currently have power of attorney rights on the property. I just want to address, I would really like the safety concerns to be addressed for John's property and Mike's. Just pertaining to his trailer and anything else, I'm perfectly fine with the pole being moved across the street with certain conditions and saving and replacing the driveway and the actual stone wall. That's a kind of an agreement we had, but I'm open to that and I'd rather have everyone safe if it's easier.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I mean, as far as design, usual design, is there anything else preventing you from putting the additional pole across the street? As the, the butters have a concern?
No, it's just, it, you know, like I said, we prefer to keep the line straight instead of jogging, you know. It's two, basically it creates three angles where there's zero angles now. And then, you know, the extra, the extra pole. You know, part of that discussion, as Mr. Mizinski was just saying, was, you know, that pole and anchors will be going in the opening in the stone wall there now. So as part of that, we would be probably needing to move his opening. We, you know, probably move those stones into that.
If you did the additional pole?
Yeah, that would be a requirement of that.
Okay. Yes?
Shirley Mizinski, 60 Oak Street. The only issue I have with this discussion is then it puts the other neighbor, two neighbors on the street, I think in the same position as Mr. Zwickar was, not being notified of changes within so many feet. I'm not sure. I'm just bringing this up as a question.
Okay.
We did the 100-foot.
Yeah, it's got to be 110.
So what was that, number 43 and 42? Sorry.
Let me just take a beat. Board, any questions while I'm checking this out? And then.
Sorry, can I just?
Yes.
This was just a discussion about this potential design. I haven't really, I mean, I've explored it, but we haven't actually designed it yet, so.
Okay. Because you had added P, the red one, right? You had added that additionally. Or no, you're removing that one. P 20?
We didn't. That was just part of the original.
Oh, okay. Yes.
Through the chair.
Name and address.
Mike Greco, 46 Oak. So the drawing you have in front of you isn't what we've been talking about? Because they didn't do it up. They didn't want to do it up. So P 20, you see right there?
Yes.
The discussion that we had, and what discussion, would be directly across the street?
That's, we haven't designed it yet.
We haven't been designed.
Move forward with this.
And through the chair, through the, our highway department, Mr. Marks, he knows that one driveway is a suicide driveway where Jesse goes to pull out next to the burn. So the thing would be is a large oak street, a large oak tree, as we all know, was dead, fell over in the yard. So it'd be a matter of just moving the driveway down, take those rocks and put them where the driveway is. And Mr. Mizinski, he had no problem with it either.
Okay. I just need to make sure that.
What addresses do we look at?
Yeah.
Is 42 is here or is it on the 45 side? What addresses, excuse me, through the chair, what addresses were you, Mrs. Mizinski, were you asking about? What numbers? Was across the street?
I can't tell. I, offhand, I don't know, but it's the next, the other two neighbors that are, again, falling into the same situation that Mike Zwickar did. He wasn't notified and it was, you understand.
Mm-hmm, yeah. The additional pole is triggering a wider, a wider scope. What, what is the address for the pole? Where the pole is going? The potential pole?
45 Oak Street, directly across.
Okay.
Excuse me, if I may, again. So that triggers closer to the next neighbor.
45 Oak Street.
And the one across the street from them.
What's across the street?
The technicalities that we tried to resolve.
I think it's number 42. It's 45 and 40.
So 41, 45, 42 are on this list?
If I make through the chair, the reason that they're not notified right now is because they're in front of us, they don't have to be notified for. What we're trying to request is that the pole gets put in. Then if so, then pull a special permit, scenic road, to move the stone wall, put in the pole. I agreed to a guy wire on my property on the other pole, which would notify just to have the two neighbors down the street. And that would just be no problem because the guy wire would be going on my land.
So we have an application in front of us.
Yeah, through the chair.
I think we're getting a little, yes.
I'm not so sure that we're not overstepping our authority as far as what this, what this application is. Us designing the poles and the wiring and the engineering of all that is not planting woods. If they're going to cut down trees, they're going to knock down stone walls. We're, we're, guide wise, the selectmen approve what the final layout is of the, of the pole. They're, they're the granting authority.
Right. So what we have to consider.
We're considering a scenic road application, so I don't see where we have any authority in saying, you're going to put a pole here, you're going to put a pole there, you're not going to put a pole there. That's not our job. Whether or not they're going to cut down trees or knock down stone walls is what we're supposed to be looking at, not the engineering part of this and where the poles and guy wire are going.
Preservation of natural resources, environmental values, historical values, scenic and aesthetic characteristics, public safety, compensatory actions proposed such as replacement of trees or walls, other sound planning considerations. So that's what the board's decision should be based on. So there is public safety. I'm hearing a little safety issue possibly. I don't want to redesign the project either. It's infrastructure, yes. This guy wire.
Yeah, the guy wire is not part of that. The guy wire that John was talking about was not part of this design here. That was part of a different scenario.
Okay. I got a little off the rails there.
The guy wire on the street will be there, through the chair.
Okay. So I think we need to act on what we have as an application here. I don't think we can add things. Anyone else in the audience? No, no, no. So this plan here is what you're proposing, right?
Is it just different?
June 14th. No, it's just different color.
Okay. I was looking at yours. It was a different color.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Madam Chair.
Yes.
So June 14th, that's the definitive?
This is what, yes, this is what is in the application, what we would be voting on. This is what, yes, this is what is in the application, what we would be voting on. Okay, anyone? No more public comment? Name and address? One last question?
Mike Spooker, 46 Oak. And this is going to say one thing, normally on the board, we always request more than one layout for a project. And on this particular project, there is options. The only thing is, is the clients don't want to apply those options. Just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think we have to act on this application because of the butter notification requirements, and this is what the applicant is requesting us to act on. So there's a separate movement.
It's like Judge Judy.
Let me just take a peek. I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Marks, second by Mr. Sokrath. All is in favor?
Aye.
Okay. All right. I've lost my paperwork.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
One remaining question that the board had asked about, a level that I provided twice again.
Yes.
One of the questions was regarding our statement about having transformers for the solar array.
Yeah.
Okay, that would be right away?
Yes.
I think, just to clarify that for whomever had asked that question, I'm not so concerned about existing transformers being upgraded and whatever, split in the right of way. I just believe that any additional ones that are needed for the solar array, I think you said, to be remain on site.
Correct. We're talking about the public way. Yeah, there will, the, there will actually be one less transformer in the public way than there is now.
As a condition for the approval?
That was just asked of me.
But no, by the way, I was going to say.
Okay.
You said you're putting on blue rays, so.
Yeah, Blue Wave will have the equipment on their site, but the other conditional recommendation came.
Chief Warden?
So we're going to struggle with the dentures. Make sure that they're left in the way within the right of way with their removal pressure.
Yeah, I did have a conversation with Arbus, National Grid's Arbus, and they said they'll work it out with the town, whatever, whatever's needed, and if anything is on private property, he said that they can work it out with the town.
Whatever, Mr. Ferro. Removal of the denture, should, anything that's getting taken down should be removed.
We already took down a bunch of.
No, but the, but the trees don't get left there.
Oh, yeah, no, they.
Excellent.
Okay, so that would be.
Get left if the, if the owner wants.
So that would be a condition of the approval?
So moved.
Okay, so I will entertain a motion to grant the special permit for, to upgrade overhead conductors and replacing relocating 24 poles on Oak Street with the conditions previously mentioned.
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mr. Marks.
Second.
Second by Mr. Greco. All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, good luck.
All right, through the chair. Just keep an open forum with the butters. They know things, you know, and I think, just, just please work with them.
Next up, pole. If you have a chance to ask.
Yes.
Yeah, I'll have this permit, this is a permit from general bylaws, so as long as the chair assigns it, it's a strategy. So I believe we had submitted one already, but we need to amend it.
I don't believe so. The tug with Ms. Freeman is on, she'll go again.
Right, thank you.
Thanks.
Come back.
Okay, thank you. Can we look at the, the meeting minutes? If we can have that be the last item, that would be wonderful.
Yep.
And we have three vouchers and two decisions.
Two meeting minutes here.
Madam Chair, one of the decisions.
Meeting minutes? Well, I don't think so. This is the first time that it didn't look packed.
Okay.
They what?
Yep.
These weren't in the pack from the last, you know, last meeting.
Oh, we just got them, we just got them today.
Okay.
We have no meeting minutes?
No one else? I'll, Mr. Benoit, if you don't mind, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Schultzberg.
What's the motion?
Back with Jerome.
Second by Mr. Greco.
Second, third.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, board.